Okay, I would like to call to order the special meeting of the Denellin Planning Board, June 13th, 2023, at the time of 7:13. This meeting is being held in compliance with Chapter 231 of the Public Clause of 1975. That is what notices this meeting was provided by a notice to the newspapers and record for the borough, and that was posted on the public announcement for Borough Hall, and it was filed with the Borough Clerk and all of the court to be held for public meetings. Don't please stand for the seat. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Go, go please.
Tom DiAmico? Absent. Absent. Teresa Ratner?
Here.
Barbara Seif? Absent. Eric Walker? Absent. Mayor Salento?
Here.
Councilwoman Rios?
Here.
Michael Mullen? Absent. Chairman Dornbear?
Here.
Robert Kraus?
Here.
And Christopher Brilianti?
Here.
Let's move on to new business, consideration and discussion of the 2023 reexamination report of the master plan and climate resilience plan.
All right. Good evening, everybody. My name is Dan Halbin. I'm with DMR Architects. I affirm and mostly specifically myself prepared these two plans that we're talking about tonight, which are essentially amendments to the Borough's master plan. Fran Reiner of DMR gave a presentation of these documents to the mayor and council, a informal presentation on May 1st, and tonight it's the official presentation for the adoption of these documents. All right, now move to the next slide for... Oh, okay. And now move to the next slide. Now you see our faces. That's Fran Reiner. He's the man I answer to. He was here last month giving the presentation for the mayor and council, just explaining what these documents were. And that's me, Dan Halbin, professional planner in the state of New Jersey, certified nationally and lead reassociate through the United States Green Building Council. Who are we in terms of Denellin? Well, we're the Borough Planner, involved in several initiatives that have been taking place over the last couple of years, including recent amendments to the redevelopment plan for the downtown, working with the Borough to do the pop-up park across the street from Borough Hall. It was last year or the year before. We've assisted in the distribution of public surveys, including two surveys that went out last summer for burning cannabis and complete streets and master plan reexamination questions for the public. And we worked with the planning board to review applications that come in for redevelopment. We've also been preparing these two documents that we presented tonight. We provide redevelopment, planning, special planning, municipal life planning, and board planning services for communities all around northern and central Jersey. And we are experienced in preparing master plans, including reexamination reports, redevelopment plans, and other services that also bring us to Denellin. What is a master plan? A master plan is a planning board during process, by which I mean the master plan is a document that is reviewed and guided and ultimately adopted by the planning board as we are doing now, as the Borough did, and the Borough Planning Board did about a decade ago. The master plan is a statutorily required document that establishes the Borough's goals, mostly in terms of development and providing services over a 10-year period. It serves as the basis for many policy decisions, investments, municipal investments, and ordinance changes. It establishes the validity of local zoning, by which I mean if an ordinance is adopted that impacts land use, it has to be reviewed by the planning board for consistency with the master plan. If there is an inconsistency, then the master plan typically needs to be amended, sometimes through a short version of a reexamination report in order to make that ordinance consistent. The last master plan was adopted in 2011, and I think the official adoption date is actually 2013, but the title date is 2011. Your 2011 master plan includes the minimum required section, which include a statement of the Borough's goals and objectives for the 10-year effective period. It includes a land use element, which does examine a number of things, including current demographic patterns and land use patterns, and sets the goals for land use in the future, including development of housing, improvements of commercial areas, and so forth. And housing plan, which is a required, not only as part of the master plan, but through the municipal land use law, but through the Fair Housing Act, the municipality is required to adopt a housing element, the fair share plan, that shows how it's going to address its total housing need, which the Borough did back in 2016 and continues to implement. There are also certain discretionary components that municipal land use law allows municipality to adopt into its master plans. The ones that are listed below are ones that were in the 2011 plan. Those are the ones that we considered when we were reexamining the report. Those include addressing historic preservation, economic development, circulation, recycling, utilities, open space, community facilities, and urban design. Once again, a reexamination of a master plan is required every 10 years. Every 10 years, the municipality can decide whether it wants to adopt a full, very detailed new master plan that includes the land use housing and other discretionary elements, or it could choose to do a reexamination report, which is typically, can be a brief review, or it can be something more detailed, like what we prepared. And a reexamination report is required to address six items. One, it's supposed to identify the problems and objectives in the last reexamination report or the master plan. So we, in preparing this document, reviewed the 2011 master plan, we reviewed prior plans, and we reviewed reports that were prepared in the time between, which were not necessarily components of the master plan, but gave us insight into the issues that the Borough has been addressing between 2011 and today. We have to address the extent to which things have changed, so that looks at whether certain those goals and objectives remain relevant, whether they've been addressed, how they've been addressed, and what may have changed statewide that impact those things. Significant changes in assumptions behind policies and objectives. That does a little bit like the prior section in that it examines how the world has changed around the municipality, but also looks at changes in trends in the municipality, a lot of demographic and economic analysis, looking at how populations change, how incomes have changed, whether there have been a growth or loss in jobs and such. The fourth section is a recommendation of changes to the master plan or development regulations based on issues that the Borough has experienced over the last 10 years, or based on whether certain items from the prior master plan or reexamination report were actually addressed. Recommendations regarding redevelopment plans, I think that straightforward, in this case, looking at how the changes that could be made to the downtown redevelopment plan to improve its effectiveness. And finally, recently, the state adopted an additional requirement involving recommendations concerning the development of electric vehicle infrastructure. A lot of that's been sort of preempted by the law that passed in 2021 that requires municipalities to, or new development to municipalities, to provide a certain number of electric vehicle parking spaces, but it also provides guidance in terms of how municipalities can convert their fleets to electric vehicles and provide proper charging infrastructure for those vehicles. So our process in preparing this was very involved. We were asked to start these documents about a year ago, and we've been very involved with the Borough. The Borough has a steering committee for preparing this document and the Climate Resilience Plan. We've prepared drafts, asked for feedback, received feedback, implemented the feedback. We worked with the Borough to send out several surveys, which are detailed on the next slide, and to host a public outreach event. And actually, earlier this year, we had another public outreach event the mayor hosted to catch the public up on what's been going on in the Borough. The effects of the plan, as I stated in the previous slide, it provides for the basis of new zoning and development regulation changes over the next 10 years. It provides recommendations for investments or policies that the Borough can pursue to address the issues that have been arisen over the last 10 years. And it creates a vision for how the Borough should develop over the next 10 years as well. So the surveys that we were involved with to inform our recommendations included a survey that was sent out last summer. We received 265 responses, of which 247 came from Borough residents. Questions were coordinated with the New Jersey Transit Bradley Planning and the NJTPA Complete Streets Initiative, which have been working with the Borough to develop a complete streets policy, which, for those who don't know what that is, is essentially a policy that provides for street improvements that accommodate multiple modes of travel, including pedestrians, bicycles, transit, buses, and your everyday car driver. The takeaway from this survey was that the downtown traffic, local taxes, and flooding severity were major issues for the public and a priority for what should be handled over the next 10 years. Cannabis survey was administered last summer, which we also assisted with. 282 people responded, 88 of which were residents of the Borough. The general feedback from the survey was that their residents were generally in favor of cannabis businesses in Denellin, with a preference for retail-related businesses rather than more industrial-type uses, such as growing and manufacturing cannabis products. So this was also played into, or advised some of our recommendations within the document. We held with the mayor a public outreach meeting on September 14th, 2022. Thirty-three residents, business owners, and local workers attended. It was an opportunity for us to exchange information with them, get a sense of what they were concerned about in the Borough, and it really echoed a lot of what we heard from the survey in terms of traffic and downtown development being at the forefront of residents' The fourth section of this document contains many recommendations. I've just picked out some highlights to just go through on this slide. In terms of economic and downtown redevelopment, we recommended taking further action to expand open space in the downtown, either working through, working with developers, or through acquisition of vacant properties. Consistent with the feedback we got from the public, we recommended exploring development of a downtown improvement district, which is a essentially semi-private corporation that is dedicated to improving the quality of a downtown area. We made recommendations regarding provision of adequate parking and expansion of the types of uses that are permitted in the downtown to better achieve the goals of the prior master plan and of the redevelopment plan itself. And we recommended considering cannabis-related uses based on the feedback of the cannabis survey. But we're referring also in the document to the cannabis task force that is also examining that data and other available data to make the best decision for the Borough. We made recommendations for preserving and protecting community character, including protecting buildings with historic value. We, in particular, identified the theater on North Avenue, preserving that, encouraging what I'm hearing people call "fascist" to me recently, which is sort of an enhancement of an existing building as part of a redevelopment of that property, if that is something that were to occur. And regulating the 5G infrastructure to ensure that any new antennas that are rented in the public right-of-way or on a separate properties do not constitute an eyesore and don't impair public well-being. Minimizing public costs. There's not a whole lot that a municipality can do to reduce the tax burden, except for providing for what we call "radables," which is just a lot of commercials and industrial spaces. There's also sharing services with neighboring municipalities to avoid redundancies and achieving energy efficiency or generating renewable energy on public properties to reduce energy-related costs that may, you know, be burdening the public budget. In terms of environment, we are encouraging the development of green building guidelines or encouraging green building practices, especially in the downtown. That's not just about energy preservation, that's about avoiding or minimizing stormwater runoff. That burdens the stormwater system and floods neighboring properties. We're recommending increasing open space, especially in the downtown, which is, you know, serves for stormwater reduction and also improving the experience in the downtown by both places to hang out after they grab their coffee or ice cream or what have you. We're encouraging flood conscious zoning and engineering standards, which I'm actually going to have to get back to at the end of this presentation for reasons that I think the board is where, sure, should be where at this point. And protecting existing trees and promoting native planting standards, tree protection has a number of benefits for the community, especially in the downtown. There's something called the urban heat island effect, where if you have an area that has excessively impervious coverage or excessively developed, the temperature in those areas can be as much as or beyond 10 degrees hotter than surrounding areas. So having a dense tree canopy in a downtown, having a lot of open space, makes the downtown a more comfortable place to be in the summer, and that, you know, extends to residential neighborhoods. I live in a suburban neighborhood. If I walk my dog in the middle of the day, I don't happen to need to go very long because there is not a lot of trees in my neighborhood. So yeah, I'm sure that's a common experience with people like dogs. Circulation. The Borough's been pretty proactive on this in promoting and prioritizing multimodal transportation, not only in terms of enhancing developments around the train station, but in working with New Jersey Transit and the North Jersey Transportation Planning Association to promote complete streets in the downtown, which, like I previously stated, is a practice of accommodating multiple modes of transportation and travel on public roads. And I think that that's something that the Borough should continue to emphasize, and it's great for the downtown, and it's great for the local quality of life and safety for anybody whose lives are lost anywhere in any community. And housing, increasing the supply of housing in the downtown is essential for reducing housing costs for everyone. It's something that the Borough's already been doing by effectuating the downtown redevelopment plan. We echoed recommendations from prior plans for, in terms of exploring senior housing options within the Borough. There's no senior housing development to allow people of age in the communities where they have been living, maybe they want to downsize. Senior housing developments are a great way to give them that opportunity. And of course, continuing to comply with the fair housing obligation, which the Borough is doing through the downtown redevelopment plan. You know, before I move on to the climate resilience plan, I am going to actually address the item that I talked about before, which is the encouraging flood conscious zoning and engineering. You all received an email this afternoon from Jerome that, in my preparation for tonight, I discovered that there was, a chunk of text was inadvertently deleted in the bottom of page 67 through the top of page 68. And I know that it was accidental, because it starts in the middle of one paragraph and ends in the middle of another paragraph. And I will admit that I have a somewhat defective keyboard, so I think that that's probably a link. But what I want to tell you is that there's, between the paragraphs that were cut off in the middle, there's a chunk of text that provides recommendations, that sort of provided also an explanation for the context of figure 4.11, which is on page 68, which says, "Proposed rezoning of flood-prone areas." So the text that was in that missing chunk has had language that suggests that the Borough will look at rezoning areas that are within the 100-year flood plane to change standards to reduce the impact of flooding in those areas. And that can mean reducing impervious coverage, requiring new development to match FEMA's new development standards, or using other techniques to reduce the impact of flooding in these neighborhoods and protect any new buildings that might go in there. I've spoken with Michael Collins and Krishna regarding the fact that this language was missing. I did tell them that there is language that is essentially to the same effect as this in the climate resilience plan. So the addition of this language doesn't, we don't think require the Borough, the board to have another hearing on this. Let me just provide you with a handout right now, which has a language that should have been in that gap, and maybe we'll clarify why the bottom of page 67 doesn't jive with the top of page 68.
Well, this board force the amendment provides for us to be replaced on those.
Yep.
Thank you.
So do you want this? Yeah. I bet. So the board can decide tonight if they want to incorporate this language into the final document. In any case, it'll be available for the public to see, but the language that the board has in front of them will essentially says what I just said. It's a Section 5, which is called Flood Conscious Zoning, Site Design, and Property Maintenance Standards. This language was in earlier drafts that were reviewed by the mayor, by the steering committee, and somehow got weirdly deleted that was not consistent with any intention that I had or any instruction that I believe that I've received. So it's, and like I said, there's language very much to the same effect in the climate resilience plan. So no matter what happens with the addition of this language in here, it's the master plan. By adoption of these documents tonight, the master plan will have language that encourages the revisiting of zoning for areas out of flood prone. So the language states that the vision for these areas should be to reduce development intensity so as to protect lives and property, and reduce impervious coverage and structures that exacerbate flooding and stormwater runoff. This can be achieved by rezoning flood-prone areas with lower permitted impervious coverages, among other techniques. Borough should define impervious coverage and building coverage to provide a coverage discount for permeable pavements and similar technology that, such as a square foot of permeable pavement equates to a fraction of impervious coverage to that of traditional pavement. So essentially, if you put an impervious paper on your driveway, it counts as quarter, half of if you were to just put asphalt on your driveway. The prior paragraph had been cut off in the middle, or the paragraph that starts at 27 and continues at the top of, sorry, the bottom of 67 and continues at the top of 68. And the gist of that paragraph is that impervious coverage in the residential zones in the Borough is allowed to go up to 25%. The impervious coverage in the residential properties within the Borough is only about 15%. So for the most part, properties aren't going above or even close to what's allowed. The impact this will have on existing properties is minimal. It really just means that if somebody wanted to expand their property, expand their driveway in the future, that they would have to comply with an impervious coverage standard. But I just want to provide clarification on that because it was missing in the document. I will, I'd like to move on.
Question?
Yeah, go for it.
So for this, and then moving ahead, coordination with FEMA regulations, or we come up with a percentage number, what's, as far as our direction? I'm.
Um, I think, I don't, if you're okay with it, I'd like to address that question at a later point. I just wanted to get into, explain the context of this because it's not in the document that the board or the public have reviewed before tonight. The main takeaway at this very second is just that I spoke with Krishna, I spoke with Michael. They think that if the Borough, if the board wants to add this into the.
I know what happens later.
Yeah, yeah. But I just, I just want to communicate that this language can be added to the document without any legal implications. I'll happy to answer that question after I go into climate resilience plan, if that's okay. I don't know how you'd like to handle this, Chairman. Would you like to?
No, no, that's fine, because I have a question. So.
Okay. All right. So the climate resilience plan is a separate document that was prepared concurrently with the reexamination report. And what I wanted to say real quick is that the fact that we are preparing this document is actually, you should all be very proud of your mayor. This is the, and I was a part of the original conversation about this a year ago, so I'd love to say you be proud of your mayor and anyone else who was involved in the discussion of preparing this document. And I'm not just saying this is that because he, because he pays him. The, this is a element of the master plan that the governor added to the municipal land use law in 2021. It is required, it required, the amendment to the municipal land use law required, and the town that's adopting a new land use plan element, either separately or as part of a full-scale master plan amendment, to have a comprehensive assessment of the municipality's vulnerability to climate change and natural disasters. The Borough is not doing a full master plan, it's not doing a new land use element. It is doing a reexamination report, which would not be triggered to have that requirement under the municipal land use law. But in light of what has happened in Sandy, and Ida more recently, and just the everyday experience with the severe storms, we were asked to do this assessment to look at the impact of flooding and other natural disasters on the Borough, because that's an important issue for the municipality to act on over the next 10 years. So I think everybody should be aware that this is something that the Borough is doing voluntarily, and that gets a really great proactive idea. And I mean that. The climate resilience plan per the municipal land use law amendment is required to do a few things. It's required to analyze current and future climate threats, which in the Borough's case is primarily in the form of flooding from the green and bogged brooks. It's required to do a build-out analysis, which means to look at how much the development could take place in the municipality, and particularly in hazard-prone areas based on existing zone. It's required to identify crucial facilities and evacuation infrastructure, to analyze the potential impacts of natural disasters on the master plan, to recommend improved design standards, and to make a policy statement of consistency of the document with the MLUL and with master plan, and also to make sure that it's relying on the most recent data from the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. The report found that vulnerabilities within the Borough are, as I said, increased chances of floods and increased chance of higher volumes of precipitation beyond your hurricanes and severe storms, which obviously affect lowland and riverine neighborhoods. And of course, power outages resulting from. And of course, power outages resulting from storms, high winds and the like. The plan provide, recommend, provides recommendation for combating the impact of climate change through climate conscious design standards and improve flood hazard impact mitigation, which is stormwater, property acquisition and flood plains and can include a number of other things. So the contents of the plan, the beginning of the plan analyzes the threats from natural hazards and climate change. We identify critical infrastructure facilities, including examining the ownership, operation, you know, maintenance of sewer systems and electrical systems. Includes a build out analysis, which as I said, identifies how much development could take place within flood prone areas within the borough and provides recommendations for policy actions and, and land use strategies to mitigate the effects from climate change. So I just want to bring some context to the map to the right. The map that you see on here shows the hundred year flood plain in purple, which as you can see, it covers predominantly the southern half of the borough. It covers a strip of neighborhoods on the north side of town along Green Brook. You can't really, maybe some of you might be not be able to see it so much under the teal wetland layer, which is the kind of light blue, but that whole green chunk up there is flood plain. The yellow properties were properties that we concluded based on zoning could potentially be developed or subdivided. So some of these smaller properties, for example, they are, they have a minimum lot area for two family dwellings in some cases, or they might meet the conditional use standards to be developed, multi-family development if they're in the RV zone. And then of course, the giant yellow chunk in the middle is the downtown redevelopment area. We looked at the zoning and we looked at projects that were actually already improved in the downtown and elsewhere in the borough. The climate impact assessment identifies the borough's assets, which not just, you know, downtown, they're also your public open spaces, your schools, your, your, the population overall, the natural resources that you enjoy, including the Green Brook and Bog and Brook. So the Green Brook and Bog and Brook were at higher, highest risk, obviously because they are the thing themselves that flood, that impacts, you know, they, thereafter a storm, they'll be, you know, loaded with debris, for example, that impacts the wildlife that exists in there and the flow of water. Municipal facilities, such as the municipal building, schools, firehouses, D W properties are all at moderate risk of flooded from flooding, precipitation and drought. State and regional services are at moderate risk of related to flooding and precipitation. And I, I think that that kind of ties to how the state is able to assist the borough during a major storm. But we have determined that we all have a medium adapted capacity, which means that there, you know, you're, you're not doomed and you have the ability to get ahead of the worst in climate conditions around the, the, over the next decade and the year. So this is the table in the document that shows the scoring. This is based on the guidelines that we, that were published by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection for conducting a climate assessment, essentially rank your risk from a scale of zero to five, zero being you're not at risk, five being you're at super risk. And your, your score of vulnerability on the far right reflects is pretty much your total vulnerability score from the columns on the middle of each. So now I'm going to welcome questions. You know, I, everybody is, this board has had an opportunity to review these documents. Some of you have been on the steering committee, so you've had a chance to review it multiple times and I'm sorry to have you endure that. But I, I think, you know, the guide, the recommendations that are set forth in these documents are pretty wide ranging and I think are a good place to start for the next ten years. So I'll take the question that you were asking before about what happens next. So for, in terms of specifically, you were asking about the flood conscious zoning conversation. So that would, what would happen is that map that we showed, which maybe I can go back and tune in on it. So I'm here. Yeah, there we go. Let me see if I can tune in. There are dumb people who will play around with this. Uh-oh. All right, here we go. All right, here we go. I think that's the one on the right. So that, that's zoning that, or the, the area that you see the little black dots, that is a kind of a, a rough outline for neighborhoods that are in the flood plain. We tried to catch the entirety of properties that were in the flood plain. So if it's like just a corner of the property is actually in the flood plain, I was shown in the GIS map, we included the whole thing. So the idea would be you would look at these areas and, and decide what are, what the, I think, I think it should be a public outreach process and behind such an action because you want to make sure that, you want to know what the experience is of the people who live in these areas. You, you want to hear from them to know what they're, what, what they see as the future for these neighborhoods. We look at what the impervious coverages are existing and what's allowed, which we took a stab at based on the 2018 state and analysis of previous coverage. You look at design standards in other flood prone communities, see what they've done. You know, just as an example, there's a zone in Woodbridge Township that was severely hit by superstorm Sandy. And that FEMA flood aid, flood mapping shows is going to be continuously severely affected. So what they did in that zone is that they said that there could be no new development except that if your property is destroyed by a storm, you can rebuild. It's provided that you meet the national flood insurance programs, standards for, for flood prone properties, which is, you know, building above the, the flood, base flood elevation is to design, make sure that the structure can withstand the force of hurricane, you know, sandy level waves and winds. So, you know, we look at both of those, we look at other communities, we figure out what, you know, what is consistent with the borough's vision for these areas to protect existing and future residents and to make sure that the effects of flooding in those neighborhoods don't carry over to others. It's, you know, I don't know if I'm going beyond what you're asking, but we're going to be talking, I don't stop, so maybe something.
So, so we're, my feeling is we're going to need to back this into some of the regulations fairly soon. Go ahead. And then to be sure that it's coordinated with Lou, who does the site engineering and so forth.
Right.
And FEMA and all that. So how would that coordination? I know master plan is, this is the big idea and then you solve the issues, but I'm, how do we hope that?
You know, I, I wouldn't really have thought about coordinating with FEMA. I mean, Lou and I would look at these areas, we'd talk about what's, what's realistic. I'd bring in your, your borough attorney, I'm sure we all are probably saying that about what's legally provided. I mean, a lot of it comes down to looking at best practices, coordinate with community. And, you know, if you want to seek guidance from a state or federal agency, that's certainly not a bad idea. I mean, if there's people out there who are in these agencies who are experts on what you, what is, you know, acceptable in these areas, what can survive as storm forces that work in those.
So, I mean, it gets, it starts to get involved with people selling the property to people who are on this, this, this.
Sorry, say that again, I can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. People selling property or being asked to sell their property in a severe flood prone area.
Yeah.
I just don't want to be in a situation where it's, we do this for this property, that property to develop something that's consistent, even though I know in flood areas there are variations, a lot of variation.
Yeah. I mean, I don't really, I'm not sure why there'd be a situation where it's piecemeal. I mean, we, we apply it, we apply the standards over the whole, over a whole area, I would think it's effective. This, this map shows that it suggests that the zone be basically match the flood hazard area boundaries. So I don't, I don't think it would be a piecemeal kind of thing. It would just be a year. It, it, you know, the regulations will come into play mostly when somebody want, you know, if somebody wants to rebuild their property, wants to renovate one, if somebody buys out a whole property and wants to do something. Yeah, so zoning won't really come into play, it's not, you know, it won't really affect people who aren't touching their property or who are in zoning, probably if someone wants to do something, but.
So you could do a sale and sale. If I'm a homeowner and I want to sell to a homeowner that's not going to knock you down in that house, it's fine.
Right.
But if the person wants to knock my house and build brand new up, then that, you're recommended.
Yeah, that's how the zoning, that's who the zoning would impact.
Does that depreciate the value of these homes even further in these zones then if we're hopefully zoning it that way?
Sorry, can you say that one time?
Are these depreciating the value of these homes even further if we're zoning it this way?
You know, no, I don't think so because what we'd want to have are standards that ensure that buildings that come onto these properties can actually withstand future flooding. So if anything, the, the properties would be more valuable because the, the structures on those properties are, can be more, are more reliably going to survive future storms.
No, but I'm talking about the person, Mrs. Smith, who lives in a hundred and five year old home that was her family's home and she inherited and she decided to live there and she's going to sell this new zoning, then the values doesn't depreciate her property even further?
I don't, I think, I mean, I think it's going to depend on what we do there. I don't think it would have any impact, but you know, I don't think that that's on how severe you're getting there.
Well, if FEMA maps are changing, I mean, that, that can depreciate values of property. FEMA map comes along and says, guess what, you're in a flood plain or your base foundation town, that's raised. That has an effect.
Yeah.
It's in the flood zone. Yeah, it's not a change.
Right.
But I mean, I don't know, yeah, has the network FEMA maps changed recently or since I went?
I think the last adoption was 2018, but I don't know.
Yeah, they, they adjusted them based on, we looked at the geography, they didn't re-study the, so change, but only because they, they did more active geography, redelayed it.
Some people think less. So the other question is, we have several holder projects going on for the county and the south side of town, plus the one that we have through the D E P on the south side of the goal of boroughs. Once these projects have all completed, somehow make that plea to FEMA to reexamine everything. So we go ahead with the zoning. Does this get reexamined if they come back and change that factor? Do they mitigate factors to push the water out? Or is there no hope for FEMA ever going to flood plain?
So, so the question is, do we have to change zoning every time FEMA changes their flood map?
Exactly.
Yeah, that is, that's a fair concern. I think that that's something that when we, when the borough, if the borough were to pursue this kind of practice, that, that we'd have to consider.
If we've seen an unfair practice with FEMA, that's, that's why we're going to turn flood back. Have that, have that side, most of that side is south and no one does flood.
Yeah.
And they were all probably, I know personally, parents had to sell a house with this.
Yeah.
So, okay. So I'm just, I'm just, I'm playing a little bit of devil's advocate.
Yeah.
How we play with zoning, you know, and realities of how our federal government works.
Yeah, I'm sure.
It's complicated.
No, I think that, I think that when we, when we actually get into the process of looking at how, at what the borough should be doing with these, with flood, in flood prone neighborhoods, I think, I think that's something I need to think about. I don't have the answer for that right now, but I'd, I'd like to see what other municipalities have done around, you know, here around the country to, to address this sort of situation.
How can you be written in a way where if the license of properties in the flood zone and flood zone changes, they're not in there anymore than the plan?
Yeah, that would be ideal. That would be ideal if you, if you could have a essentially, essentially a moving overlay zone that is tied to a natural feature. I would, I, the only reason I didn't say anything about that is because I don't know if that's legal. So that's something that I think I'd like to look into. I don't know if your plant or attorney is waiting on that tonight or if that's something that, you know, we handle further down the road, but I, I would think that that would be the best way to handle something like that.
These are means for that zoning, having appeal processes and all of a sudden coming forward to get variance for the planning board.
So they're not, if they say, hey, your zone has me in a flood plain, but I'm not, it would be an variant, an appeal, I think. Yeah, they could pay an appeal. Yeah, they come in with a seventy, seventy A and ask the, you know, zoning board to look at the map and say, oh yeah, you're right. And they'd be exempt from that. But I, but I think what Lou was saying there is, you know, the, the lines of the zone ideally move with the actual flood plain as mapped by FEMA. So that would, hopefully that would, that's something I.
So that would be called a litig document constantly, depending on what the management in office, kind of liberal or conservative they want to be. Interesting.
Yeah.
I mean, but are we going to be in a situation where if someone is in the zone, their lots have certain, appeal or something like that, also their lot is changed in different zone configurations?
It wouldn't be that they'd be.
They're going to have spots.
It wouldn't be that they'd be rezoned. It would, it would be that they would, you know, they go through the appeal process, they come to the zoning board, say the zone has me of this, my property's zoned in this flood prone area, but I'm not actually flood prone, flood prone. The zoning board would issue a interpretation of that essentially saying you're not, you're, you're not subject to these stricter standards and then they'd be able to proceed with whatever development under the underlying zoning. We're pretty much actually currently, as we're talking about this, I just want disclaimer, we're like, we're pretty much winging this discussion. So don't hold me to anything legally as to whether this is a real, a real thing that they're working on. I think it's something that we'd have to examine in the actual process of making this of an actuality.
The map that you did, so any property that has at least a portion in floods?
Yeah, it's, it's illustrated, it's obviously not a, and it's, it effective zoning map, but yeah, it's essentially just to show areas that could be, how a fully, a zone that fully looks at flood areas would, would be delineated basically.
I'm wondering if the community, this is borders, that property in the borough, you know, that are in the FEMA flood area, subscribe to these requirements.
Right. And that's, that's what we were just talking about. I mean, essentially a moving zone that moves with the flood books in that basis. So that would be.
Yeah, because everything Lehigh Street starts actually going upward on a hill. So it's, it's actually areas that should not even be a flood zone, that's a hill.
Right.
Think about.
I'm not a flood agent.
Well, no, I'm just saying, but you're recommending zoning based upon what FEMA did, so you know, it's, we're kind of back and forth on how does this really, because it's a recommendation we adopted, then we got to figure out the actual zoning laws if you decide to go or how does that get implemented?
Yeah.
On a map like this, maybe you don't really.
You wouldn't necessarily need a map for that situation. You would have a, it would be a zone, but it's not shown on a map, it's just sort of an implied overlay.
Those of us who are colorblind, you can help me. I just want, I just want to confirm something. So you're saying this here, RA, one family.
Yeah, with the, with the little polka dots. Yeah, with the, with the little polka dots. Oh, dang it, I can't zoom and point with the laser.
Also, not that.
Sure. Yeah, yeah.
So up in here, that's the single family?
Yeah, so yeah.
Okay.
That's a single family, but on the bottom, everything you see with polka dots on the bottom, that's actually more varied. There's a R A, R B, I zone and some B zone.
So, but is this yellow?
Yep, that's yellow.
All right. You say so. It's yellow to most of those ones.
It's a kind of yellow.
Okay. Just to touch upon the lot coverage.
Sure.
You're, you're saying here that the average is about 15, 25?
Yeah.
We allow 25?
That's right.
So is the recommendation then that you use that to more of?
I would, I, so the recommendation in the, in here is to bring it down to 20% in flood prone areas.
Okay.
Uh, maybe, maybe less, but at 20%, you're, you're minimizing the number of properties that are affected by this. 15%, anybody who had wanted to expand their driveway or add on to the building with FEMA.
Okay, so that, that was going to be my next question. So in terms of calculated and perfect slot coverage, it's not just the building? Are you looking at, are you looking at the driveway or?
Uh, the, um.
What's our something?
Oh, you know what? This, the, the 15% is, it looks like it's actually, the 15% is actually building coverage, not, not impermeable coverage. But I think you're allowed 50% total in a. Let's see, what is the zoning allowed? I think you're allowed 50% for your combined building and impermeable coverage, but 25% has, is, 25% building. It's allowed. I think there's another 25.
15%, that's a lot.
It, it is, yeah.
That's something to look at.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you mentioned something about clearly defining building.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we, in, uh, yeah, the language here suggests that the building and lot coverage definitions can be, you know, some towns will have a language that says if it's in a certain, if it's permeable pavement, it only counts as so many, certain percent impermeable coverage. If it's gravel, it only counts as certain percent impermeable coverage. So, uh, you know, that's something that can be looked at here.
Because I, I know of one lot used to be where the homeowners paved the backyard except for a corner where they had a place. So at least 80% of that, that lot would probably be for the.
Yeah.
So.
Not, not everyone comes from a permit.
Well. I just want to go through the, uh, reexamination report, just through my notes in case I have a question.
Sure.
On page four, there is a statement talking about the borough's obligation. So actually at the top of the page, first full paragraph, it talks about satisfying the 12-unit rehabilitation obligation. Other than the law which requires us to set aside so many units for low-income housing, where can we stand? I understand that in the past we, there was a gap between what we had and what was desired in terms of obligation.
Yeah.
So where, where do we stand? Have we caught up? Have we met that?
Um, I think Bill Robinson's been keeping a, keeping track of how many units are either been, been created or are in I-1. I don't think we've caught up, but I think based on the last conversation, we're, we're on a good trend. What, what the, what the borough has is, I think they, you've satisfied your, what's called the realistic development potential because the borough is considered a built-out community. You have, uh, so, so because of that, you have what's called a realistic development potential, which is what the borough and Fairshire House Center have determined you can realistically create by June 30, 2025 through reasonable means. And you have your unmet need, uh, which is what you're required to essentially accommodate through zoning, which we did through the redevelopment plan. Uh, so your R D P, your redevelopment potential was, or realistic development potential is 22 units, which I think we satisfied through the, the, the NEL, as they're calling it now. Uh, and you have an unmet need of 96 units. So, um, you know, we're real, we're well on the way to the 96 units and I think we might, uh, you know, you don't have to hit that 96 units before June 30, 2025. That's the, that's the great thing about the unmet need. But you might, and that would set you up pretty nicely for the forefront.
So then once that obligation is met?
Yeah.
The only thing going forward is the requirement of setting aside a certain percentage.
In, in new development.
Correct. Okay.
Yeah.
I would suggest December 8th, 2022, you know, mayoral town hall redevelopment. And there's a section by Jessica Almeida specifically on affordable housing. It talks directly about where we're at and where we're going with it.
Was that in December? I thought that was January of this year.
Nope, December 8th.
Okay, well, I, I lied somewhere then.
Okay, remember, you're on record now, so at least you admitted to it. So, but I do believe we actually have, she explained that we've actually reded the units that we then take off of what the overall total remaining is left. So between the 58, I know we picked up 14 units. I want to say we have, what, two or three in there. Every development we have, the highest amount now we've picked up, I think, is six or nine units within one development. So we're, as Daniel said, we're meeting our obligations. And with the, like I said, with Jessica Almeida saying about the credit we have, we're actually closer than what we, we might actually think we are.
Yeah. And then anything that you exceed of the third round, you can carry into the fourth round, should there be one.
What happens when we meet our obligation and there's really no more development left? Does the Fairshire House continue to force us to have more affordable housing?
All right, well, now we're in speculation, but it, but what, but what would happen? We could talk about that right now if we want to have that conversation. But, but what essentially I think is going to happen is the fourth round is going to be a lot like what it's been like the last 10 years, where we're going to have to do a declaratory judgment. There's going to be a special master at Fairshire House Center, maybe he was going to, he's going to continue to be involved. And, um, you know, you might not have an obligation because of how you progressed and, and the fact that you're small and, and fully built out town. It might be really small because in the fourth round, you'll only be dealing with 10 years instead of 26. And, uh, you might be able to continue to lean on your redevelopment plan, assuming that your downtown is going to be fully redeveloped in the next few years. And if it is fully redeveloped and for some reason you still have an obligation, then they'll tell you to rezon someplace else. But I.
So there's no insight of identity. Turn around the good stuff.
I'm, I'm, I'm telling you the worst case scenario. No, I don't think you'd be in that.
Stay in New Jersey probably. So. Question on page 55, section 8, so I got it basically. Can you explain this? It says impermeable coverage limits in the R A and R B zones are 75%. And then the B zone is 90%.
Okay, so that's actually, that's actually good. So, so before when I said that it was 50%, that was wrong. It was 75%. You're allowed to cover up to 75% of your property in a residential zone with, uh, building and pavement. The B zone, that's 90%. So, yeah, and which, you know. It's a lot. It's a lot in a, it's a lot outside of a flood zone. It's a lot in a flood zone. I, I, I don't know how, uh, you know, wet it gets on, in your residential, typical residential neighborhood after a rainstorm. But if you have less impermeable coverage, less building coverage, that helps to reduce that substantial.
Because even if you're not in a flood zone, but you've got all the coverage.
Yeah.
Your runoff is potentially building.
It's going into the street. It's going into, going next door. If your, if your storm drains aren't lined up with, you know, the actual grade of the road, which I feel like most storm drains that I see everywhere in the country are, if are, then you're going to have random puddles and the storm drain is going to be like seven feet from that puddle.
So what would be the percentage coverage? Sorry, I missed.
So it's, it's, so currently you can build, you can cover up to 75% of a residential property and you can cover up to 90% in a, of your property in a B zone, buildings and impermeable coverage. So I'm not providing a recommendation necessarily, but I would typically, uh, my comfort area for a residential zone, if you're on a 5,000 square foot lot, you know, 40, 50% max. If you're on a 7,000 square foot lot, I'd say 35, 45% is pretty typical. And a commercial property, probably usually you see 60%, except that a lot of times it's 80% in a downtown. So those are some pretty, those are some common coverage that I've seen elsewhere.
I think that's something to look at there. That's, that's for towns like ours, that, that's a serious situation. Coverage that high. Are there examples of successful towns trying to do what we're doing to town that have those types of numbers as the zoning?
I could find some for sure. So in terms of towns that have done zoning for lower impermeable coverage, there's, there, there's, there's towns probably around the country that have, that have done zoning for flood zone, for flood prone areas, you know, just, and, and the, Woodbridge is just an example of one. And I'm sure a lot of coastal communities are for sure places to look at.
Can we look at towns that are close to our size or proximity of population density? I think that's.
Yeah, we, we can do that for sure.
Just for typical residential neighborhoods, I've rarely found blockages. Well, so about over 50%.
You mean in terms of zoning or actual?
Terms, in terms of zoning.
Yeah, no, zoning, zoning is usually, uh, you know, in, in more, more spread out suburban area like, like in Edison Township or something like that, Franklin Township, you might have, you might have a 35% coverage in, in a more, you know, more condensed community like Dunellen. 50% is probably about the highest I'd see.
I think 25 to 30% of Madison lot.
Yeah, I, I, when I say 50%, I meant building and, and pavement.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we shouldn't have to look. Actually, look at Madison, that's a good example.
Madison?
Yeah.
In, in Essex? I, I got a few that I can, I can draw.
Is there anything else, Dan?
Um, no, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to answer questions about anything that's been included in here. You know, there's so many, this is full of recommendations. I, I think flooding, in my opinion, the, the things that are most significant there are, are related to handling flooding and handling downtown, you know, development. And that takes up a lot of space in here. So I'm happy to take questions at this point.
Other measures, Phil, for?
Well, there's, there's a, uh, other measures. I'm sorry, I deal with this.
Go ahead, go ahead.
You had an R 75 zone. We talked about this on 10 years ago. Give me a different things to add. So R 75 is a long base and, uh, never say. Is that, uh, adopted? Is that, it's in the master plan?
It's in the master plan. It's never adopted.
Okay, okay.
And that, and that would be beneficial, I think, because I think if you include more, it's a lot of the flood area. Yeah. And if we, if we increase those lots, it's 75, now those which are 50 are grandfathered.
Right, yeah.
Considered destruction. Destruction. But for those, there are a number of 75.
And there was, there was discussion before, maybe in my mind, but I presented using, about corner lots, being a bit larger to avoid subdividing historic houses. I don't know if that was ever. There's some, but those things can clearly be done in zoning. If it's consistent, like you say, in historic progress, if it's consistent.
Yeah, so, so, um, the idea was to require larger corner lots, is that correct?
Well, okay, so there's, there were three things I presented. One was the R 75. One was corner lots having, basically, it would, it would make the corner lots a bit larger. I don't recall, it was like 75 feet at 150. And then the other one was particularly the north end, but even the south end, our predominant lot sizes are 50 by 150. Zoning has them 50 by 100.
Okay.
So it's, our zoning is somewhat inconsistent with a big percentage of the properties. So that was another thing to discuss. Which can cause, just as a, for instance, on Lincoln Avenue, between second and third, or third and fourth, there's three houses and there's one other house on the opposite corner. So there's four houses. Current zone, 12 houses. Wait, I know. So, and they're beautiful houses. Francisco was in the same. So, um, again, we can address that as long as we're being consistent with the intention. Now, that might go against wanting to have density increase, but I can argue that. I, I think you want variety as well as density.
Yeah, you, you want variety in, in housing. You know, something that the, the master plan didn't, or the reexamination didn't really get into is, is questions about how you handle two families, something like townhouses or, or even accessory home units outside the downtown area. That's, um, you know, that would speak to providing a variety of housing. But that's not something that really came up in now in some public.
Yeah, previously that. You could help us along the way if you address these things.
Right.
Thanks.
Anyone else I want to open up this public? Pigeons have questions.
Yeah.
What was that? Pigeon type question.
Want to hang it up?
Listen. So I'll open it up, members of the public, questions? Your chance to jump into the pool of the exciting and sexy world of land use. I have a, not a question, but a statement. Is it true that Dunellen is the first town in the state to voluntarily do the climate sustainability plan assessment?
I could say that it's one of the first. The only reason.
Are we the first to adopt it? If we do it?
Maybe. I've tried, I've done my research, I can't prove, say yes or no.
We're really coming off the record. Well, why, why on the record?
Talking now?
On the record. Get me on the, get you beyond the record. A potential client in Northway, she wishes she could. She says, oh, it's such a nice. Happy to all feel good.
Thank you. Nice to hear. Okay. Very much so. While we then have the resolution, flight force, or the developer approving the master plan reexamination report and climate sustainability plan.
Can I just interrupt, Christian? Do we need to have a special, have them include a statement as whether they want to make, you know, this language part of the plan?
So the board was applying. So the board was required to be.
Be. Accidentally believed in language.
So, you know, that, that is not part of what's.
All right, so inclusive of.
Yeah.
Materials.
And obviously it'll be made public, the public will be able to ultimately see what's been added. And they have full record from this conversation of what their content's on.
I'll motion.
Go ahead. I'll second.
All right. Hold on, please.
Ms. Rappner?
Yes.
Mayor Santo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rios?
Yes.
Chairman Dornberg?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes, thank you.
Christopher Brillante?
Yes.
Okay. Yes.
Thank you very much, everybody.